We'll call to order the Gladstone City Commission Regular Meeting of June 22, 2020. invocation by Commissioner Stuzinski.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us safely together to conduct business for the city of Gladstone. Please grant us the wisdom and understanding to make the best possible decisions for the city and its citizens. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Roll call.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Akla.
Here.
Commissioner Hunter.
Here.
Commissioner Mantala.
Here.
Commissioner Stuzinski.
Here.
We'll open with public comment. If anybody wants to publicly comment, they can call in on 906-428-6062.
This is Ron Miaso.
Gladstone City Commission, can I help you?
Hi, this is Ron Miaso, just checking to make sure that the public line is open.
Alright, thanks.
Any public comment, please call 906-428-6062.
This is Ron Miaso.
Gladstone City Commission, can I help you?
Hi, this is Ron Miaso, just checking to make sure that the public line is open.
Alright, thanks.
Move on to the consent agenda real quick and we'll take calls up until we're done with that. City Commission Regular Meeting minutes of June 8th to 2020, and the payment of bills.
If you look at the electrical charges, the second page, and, uh, one, two, three, four paragraphs down, large power over 25,000 kilowatt hours per month. The distribution demand charge and the demand charge, that should be just $2 per kilowatt and $8.50 per kilowatt. It's a mistake having the kilowatt hour. And on the street lighting and the dust of dawn, um, the bottom line on each one, the energy optimization monthly charges, that number is set by the state and it changes each, it changes each year. And, uh, the, if you see the line below there, it says energy optimization, monthly charge, all, it's all commercial and industrial accounts. So, uh, current, this year it was $9.18, so that amount is wrong, but it's going to be changing before we get to the rates. So, we changed it in the rates to, uh, set by the state annually.
There was one more on the wastewater, too, did you?
Turn of page, and wastewater, the bottom line, the Rapid River readiness to serve charge, it's not 44, 45, it's $7.46.
Yep.
That's all of them? Alright. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the changes as presented.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Stuzinski, support by, I couldn't tell who it came from, Commissioner Mantala? Any more comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Still open for public comment for another minute or two at 906-428-6062. Just give it a couple of minutes, I really don't want to break into this next discussion.
Yeah.
It's a lot more difficult when people aren't here. Really want to make every opportunity, but...
That showed up? It's Paul Parker, so yeah, somewhat, for the next discussion.
I told him the public comment was before that discussion, because I talked to him.
I think he was making himself available for questions that were going to be asked.
Let's go, let's go ahead and we'll, we'll close the public comment section, and we'll go to unfinished business, Parks and Recreation, Fourth of July COVID-19 discussion.
So, the last time that we had met, I had told you my efforts in getting hold of the governor to see if she could make a special arrangement, or special permission, or if it was okay to have over 500 people in the park. I exhausted every avenue. And, um, it's very diffi-, it's very difficult because, um, you can't even get an answering machine or anything, so when you do type an email or something, you get a canned response. Um, I've talked to, um, six different communities that were having festivals, and some of them have decided to do the, um, social distancing and then just take their chances with the $500, or the 500-person limit. Um, because I couldn't, I was unsuccessful in getting an answer whether it was okay or not, can't really recommend having the festivities down there. And the main reason is because if they do come back and they say, and I say, "I had over 500 people," and they could say, "You typically have way over 500 people," so you're planning an event with the anticipation that you're going to have all these people. And we were able to have our summer concert series, um, because we don't get 500 people. So, um, that was a no-brainer. You know, we're, we're having a festivity, we're doing social distancing, we posted, and we supplied all the hand sanitizers and all those kind of good things. Um, so it's really up to the commission. Um, it's on a commission-level basis whether you want to go ahead and have festivities and possibly be over 500 people.
What's Park River doing? They're doing something, aren't they? They're having a Fourth of July.
What I had heard, they're, they're having a small celebration, but they don't expect over 500 people. That's kind of the answer. Um, I talked to Escanaba about, because they're having two events, they're having one shortly, and they thought about moving their rocking, the dock to their pavilion, or their bands, their band shell, because there's more room. And, um, I don't know how they're going to allow or limit it to 500 people, I don't know what their plan is to do that. So, I don't know if they plan on doing that, or if they just don't expect 500 people, that wasn't... They are, they're planning to do all their social distancing and all the recommendations that were outlined in the, in the order, but, um, I don't know if they were addressing the 500 people or not.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough subject to broach.
Well, it's, and you, and you can't get any answers.
Yeah. I know a lot of people are postponing weddings, because, weddings that are like in August, because they just don't know whether they're going to be able to do it. So, they're just pulling the plug on them now, unfortunately.
And the sports park shows that. We've had seven weddings canceled.
Nicole, I know I called you earlier, and this was my push the last time, so it's probably a change of events for me to say, I would try to come up with a solution to try to, uh, still have some type of a festival, Fourth of July celebration. My thought was trying to have separate areas where you'd have up to 500 people in small, little congregated festivals. And everything else through the park, um, it's on their own, it's not necessarily city function, and it's not a private function, or it could be a private function amongst the people coming. What I, what I looked at, I don't know, can we pull, so it'd be easier, can we put the, uh, the map up on there? If not, no big deal.
The one that Nicole had put in the packet?
Yeah. So, while we're looking if, well, Kim's trying to put that up, just for the viewing audience, if possible. What I was looking at, instead of having the band shell, or the band in the store or the stage on the roadway, and I know Nicole had mentioned that the ballpark is pretty much not in use, because the outfield's wet, but I know the diamond area is still pretty dry, up in that area. So, my thought was that we could put the band, or stage, in that, within the confines of the fenced-in area by the backstop, and actually snow fence it, so that way you wouldn't have anybody be able to congregate into that band area, but allow for them to play, so it actually would echo throughout the park, towards the harbor, yacht club, so on. Then, what I was looking at, like, tried to draw up, was each one of those vendors, where Nicole has them set, is we actually section each one of them off independently. And then you have an exit and an entrance, or an entrance and an exit, for each one independently. Um, so you have a sec-, so you have a little bit of a barrier, kind of, no different than what you see at the grocery stores now, um, when you go into the grocery stores, or restaurants. Actually, probably a little bit even better than what the restaurants have. So then each one of those be sectioned off individually. Then I contacted the yacht club and talked to the Commodore, Mr. Paul Parker, and I threw out an idea, when they have their band, um, last year they had their band festival, and they had it all snow fenced off. So, my thought was not having a beer tent, because I didn't think that the Lions Club was doing a beer tent. But if there wasn't, if they were, or wasn't, whatever the case may be, is to actually direct the yacht club section as being the beer tent, so to speak, location, section that off with the, with the snow fence, assisting with the yacht club on that, and have them be able to regulate the amount of people, up to 500, 250 to 500, coming into there. Um, I talked to Mr. Parker, and I believe that there was some concern that, I don't think that they'd be able to go up to that 500 limit, but he thought maybe the 250. Now, that's, I could have misunderstood him, but I know that what I was looking at was not including the indoor section of the yacht club, I know that he has some concerns. And my thought was that if you're not a member of the yacht club, that you would, you would be outside, you'd have it sectioned off even further if need be, and have the pavilion next to the yacht club be your beer tent only, no liquor sales, just strictly beer. Um, with the, the thought process that we'd be able to minimize the groups, or the amount of crowd that may show up, giving some of those other extra precautions, and the social distancing, and so on. So, that was just a little bit of a thought process. I know it's kind of a change from my earlier recommendation, that it's hard to, um, promote something and have it go against the governor's orders, but I'll be quite honest with you, I don't know when the governor's going to get done with her orders. They keep on getting extended, um, I know there's those concerns. I looked at it from a couple of different standpoint, I didn't see any spikes in our area at the Memorial Day weekend. I've been out to many restaurants since, um, I've been to grocery stores, some of them are practicing good social distancing, and some of them are not. And that holds true with restaurants, taverns, you name it. So, some are doing well with it, and some are not. And I still haven't seen any type of spiking, um, or if any, maybe one or two, I'm not 100% sure on that, um, of any new COVID cases in our area. And there may have been one in the last week or so, possibly two. I should have looked at that again before I came in here. Um, so those are some of the reasons why I changed a little bit and kind of geared it toward, maybe we could do something, um, minimize it as best we can. The rest of the park, we're not having any shows, we're not having any log rolling, we're not doing anything of that nature. The only thing, if you want to call promoting, would be kind of the bands, like we did with, like we're doing on Thursday nights to begin with. Um, but not allowing a whole group of people up by the, that stage, it's actually blocking. Um, and I, I think the reason I was picking that location is the outfield is extremely wet, you probably wouldn't get a lot of people wanting to stand around, or sit around, or do anything out in there anyways, it's just a matter of getting the music to be played and be able to be heard. So, that, that was kind of my thought, a little bit potentially as a solution, but trying to work in the social distancing, um, within some of the guy, within the guidelines of what the governor's offices, executive orders are showing, but yet also still support our independence on July the 4th, that Saturday. That was my thought.
I liked it, I mean, it is a good plan.
No, I like that, and I like the idea about, if we could, with the vendors, um, actually maybe, did you say have them fenced off?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll go up here.
Oh, yeah, oh, there it is.
Can't got it up, I knew she could.
Yeah, so they, so like, they would come in, they would exit the food, the vendor, and then they wouldn't congregate, stand around that vendor, they'd be funneled off to the open, to the open area of the park.
What I'm, what I was kind of looking at is having, have at least be a six-foot barrier all the way around, coming out and having it, I don't know.
Right, you have an in and an out.
So, you, so it'd actually be each one of them.
Right, exactly.
Horned off that same way.
Yes.
Horned off there same way. Then, what we're looking at, what I was looking at was having the yacht club, where they would be able to participate.
Have that fenced off?
And there could even be an internal snow fence around the yacht club, so that way they're not worrying about the overcapacity or...
Inside.
Inside. Strictly, the pavilion being utilized as a, as a beer, beer tent, so to speak. Again, that's only if the yacht club would be willing, or if they would want to be able to work. I don't think, and I, when I talked to Mr. Parker, I would not promote this for any additional years. I like the way, the old way, but I think for one year could be potentially an exception.
Right.
Or a way to try to get it. Um, and then have the stage, here's the ball field, there's already fencing, so if we have the stage set up here, it's dry, there's power, snow fence it across here, that way you're not having anybody up next to the stage, it's strictly just music being able to be played, and, and thinking unless we get a strong south wind, that, that music would be able to reverberate through all the park and the earth. That was kind of the thought.
Well, I, I think that's a good idea, and I mean, we can do things to encourage the social distancing, but it's up to the general public to follow the guidelines.
It is. But I also know that there was something that was mentioned, I can't remember what was something, um, there was a festivity that was mentioned, and one of the things that was explained at the governor's office, if they could lose their, uh, was the 503C?
501C3.
501C3, yeah. If they went and decided to put on some type of an event, and it exceeded that 500, so there's that threat that comes out of there as well. So, that's, that's the, damage if you do it, damage if you don't, maybe situation, something I've been used to for the last 20, 27 years in law, unfortunately.
She'd have to man that, somebody'd have to man that control, the public people go in and know where you're exactly right.
Yeah.
It'd be labor-intensive, and I guess that's the, that's the other question, where, where would we come into play? We as a city come into play, um, personnel, workers, part-timers, what have you, um, an undaunting task. But it was just a, it was a thought. I wasn't trying to go against Eric's recommendation, I thought Eric is right on his recommendation. Um, I might be surprised at him that I'm trying to bring up this solution, because the last time I was pushing that we couldn't do something. Um, I guess I'm just getting kind of fed up with not getting any answers on Lansing, no matter how much you try, no matter how much you try to come up with a plan.
Right.
You, you don't get any answers, it's the same thing.
I think people do need a win, because you ever been to get beat down for three months?
I know.
People starting to wear on you.
And I mean, just having the park open, I mean, on that day, people might just be like, even if we don't, if we didn't quote-unquote promote anything, they might just say, "I'm going down to the park. I'm going to spend the afternoon in the park, um, I'm going to sit there, we're going to grill out, we're going to, you know, picnic, and we're going to stay there till the fireworks or whatever," and that's probably just going to happen anyway.
Well, sure. And people, people are free to do that.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, and, and the other thing, too, Lansing doesn't follow their own orders, right? So, I consider it kind of less with that than it is with the retribution they have, you know what I mean? Like you say, trying to pull a 501C3, whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, but, so like, these food vendors, normally we charge, they have to get a permit to, to be there, right?
Right.
Are we going to waive that permit?
We did, we made that motion at the last meeting, right.
So, if we waive that permit, we're not sanctioning them being there, they can do whatever they want.
No, just kind of opening it up and providing them with a space.
Right. I would say, I would say that's not sanctioned.
True, but the only problem is it's, it is, it is a park, it's a property.
If we take it off our, if we take it off our map. We have to control, we have to control it somewhat, because we can't just have 20 vendors show up for horseback.
Right, right.
The Health Department does check with us, too, to make sure who is going to be in Van Cleve Park for the Fourth of July activities, so there is some accountability.
That's kind of the question is, yeah, where's the accountability at?
Yeah, and so, you know...
Well, the, the inspectors come through and check their licensing and everything, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then now this year, they'll also be doing their COVID, you know, stipulations and guidelines.
Sure. So, they'll be, they'll have to be fully licensed for the...
As they always are.
As they always are.
No different.
But to operate in our park, right now, we have, um, for the Fourth of July application, you know, fee, and, and that, which if we waived at the last move, it's going to be a Fourth of July event. There is still, in our code of ordinances, for food concession, food trucks, things, a separate one, so, um, from the Fourth of July one. So, they, our ordinance does require that they still get application from us. The State Health Department always calls me every Fourth of July and says, "Who do you have signed up? Who do you have?" They go and inspect them, and if they're not ready or licensed or whatever with them, then they're ejected because of the Health Department, but...
Sure.
That's all of them. They have to still apply with us to be operating in the park. So, if we're not doing it as a Fourth of July activity, there is still an ordinance requirement that they still apply under that other section, so...
But there would be time to, still be time to do that, wouldn't there?
Sure, and since the announcement, I mean, I've had two phone calls from vendors, and normally, there's eight.
Eight.
So, I don't know if some will even be able to be, you know, because they were asking questions. Are you able to power, all that, you know, I don't know, are we going to be able to or not? If they're self-sufficient, some have said with the requirements with COVID-19, they're not even bothering with it, but, so, I don't have a solid number for you, but...
Take into consideration also with the pared-down, watered-down version, I guess you'd call it, um, we're not probably going to go all day.
No.
You know, we're going to start maybe at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, and so, the yacht club would be on the hook from, you know, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock into the afternoon until dusk, um, as far as, you know, because the band doesn't start until 7:00. So, we were having just one band, you know, come down.
7:00 to 9:00? It was going to start at 7:00?
7:00 to 9:00.
We'd have to approach the yacht club, that they'd have to run this through their board.
Yep. Um, although, if the yacht club doesn't want to do that, um, there are three organizations that hold beer license, you know, they have like so many a year, and I could contact one of them. The other thing that I should mention is that we were going to move the band anyways, because I had talked to our electric superintendent, and there is no power there anymore, so we were going to kind of switch things around a little bit there anyways, and it wasn't going to go on the ball field diamond, it was going to kind of go up against the fence and kitty corner, so it kind of blare out through the harbor and stuff. Limiting the vendors to maybe four or five vendors at the most, and then we would have enough room down there. There is another option, um, we could have the band at the beach house, Daryl Sirio's playing, and we can have him at the beach house as a summer concert, basically. You know, it's on the Fourth of July, so of course there'd be more people, but our summer concerts never get to be 500 people. Um, so we could split it up, because I was on Darren's train of thought, you know, we should split it up, so at least you can walk to the park and have a beer, have some food, or go to a band, watch Fourth of July, or the fireworks. Um, so, we could stick to this kind of plan, basically, or we could have the yacht club in, or we can just have food vendors throughout the park, they don't even have to be in vendor row, they could be throughout the park, we have enough power, where we could put some throughout, so if you're walking down the sidewalk and you want a taco, or if you want this, or something like that, we...
And that, that would really spread people out there, too.
That would very much spread people out.
Yeah, I think that'd be a better idea, because, because even here, you know, with this plan, if you've got more than 500 people there, they're all going to be right on top of each other anyway. You know, even if, if you've got those things cordoned off.
The band doesn't use...
Because there's still going to be visiting, right?
You could, you could still do that, the, with the coordinating off and the directional in-out and for the separation, but have them spaced out.
Throughout the park.
Throughout the park.
Right, right. And maybe move the band, I like the idea of moving a band down to the, to the beach house.
An idea.
I mean, it, it works, it works there. You know, I don't know what kind of power we got at the ball diamond to support a band.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the big power.
You'd have to bring in a stage for the ballpark, right?
Um, we were just thinking of a plat-, oh, the stage, yeah, for the ball, and for the beach house, we were just thinking of a stage, you know, a small rollout stage that they could stand on.
Yeah. You got good weather protection at the beach house if it doesn't rain.
Mm-hmm. I like that idea.
Me, too.
And then spread the food vendors out.
We could do that.
Could have, still have, limited to four, that would encourage people to...
To walk.
To walk, not congregate, which they're going to do anyway.
But that, that basically tells people that they're out and they're walking, which is, which is allowed. Um, we provided by all the social distancing, the food vendors themselves will have to provide for hand washing stations and in-and-outs and all that kind of good stuff, and mask and all that, you know, and if the yacht club is good with the beer, or we could put a beer tent, because, they will come, wherever the beer tent is, they'll go, you know, isn't that, yeah?
Or even limit the congregation, just not even have one. That's another option as well. Do everything but the beer tent?
I think everybody's got a cooler in the back of their car now.
I'm sure. Maybe not even in the back.
Not even in the back. I'm sure, I'm sure it's in the back of everybody's car.
It's inaccessible with closed containers.
I know, yeah, no, you couldn't reach it.
You just said that for Darren's back end.
So, eliminate, eliminate the beer tent, just...
Or, or wait for the yacht club.
Or talk to the yacht club if that's not too intensive.
The only reason I like that idea a little bit is because it'll kind of help the yacht club, too. You know, I mean, but they weren't even thinking about being open on the Fourth, because they're not comfortable.
Right.
So, I think they might just say no.
Okay.
And I can't help them with any personnel, because my personnel is, is stretched. We're just, I mean, just keeping the bathrooms and the trash clean, so that, mm-mm.
So, if they want to be open on the Fourth, they're welcome to.
I'm sorry?
It's up to them, yeah.
Yeah, it's their call if they want to be open or not, really.
The only thing I know when I talk to them, I suggest is perhaps if this, this plan, or a revision of the plan, solution came into play, is maybe we would be able to help with the snow fencing.
We would do, yeah, that's something.
Oh, sure.
Not as far as manning it, that'd strictly be up to the club. I don't think legally... I don't think legally we could anyway.
But if we eliminated the beer tent, that would eliminate a lot of logistical issues and concerns about people gathering. Move the band over to the, the beach house, eliminate the beer tent and spread the vendors out. Bottom throughout the park.
Sounds similar to what Escanaba is doing. They're going to have some food vendors on the 4th, it sounds like.
On the 4th or the 3rd?
3rd.
I thought they said on the 4th too.
Are they?
Isn't the Rock the Dock on the 3rd?
27th is Rock the Dock and then they're having their 4th of July celebration on the 3rd.
On the 3rd, Friday.
Oh, that must be one of them.
And then they're going to light up their fireworks on the 3rd. So that's when they're going to have their food vendors and things down there.
On Friday.
Yeah, and that's, that's also some of my concern on the flip side. I know I sound wishy washy like a politician here, but that's some of my concern is that we're going to have a, maybe an influx of Escanaba um, crowd coming over to here if we're advertising that. There's going to be maybe not festivities, but there'll be some vendors in the park. We're going to have a band from 7 to 9 playing. If there's a beer tent or the yacht club decides to help facilitate that.
Or I can, I can get a beer license and people to do a beer tent. That's not a problem. So I mean, um, my feel is, is that everybody has made plans that don't include going down to the park. We're not having log rolling, we're not having dog jumping, we're not having games, we're not having blowups. I would like to set the atmosphere in the park as just a casual day in the park. Walk through, grab a taco, you know, if you want to grab a beer and the band's going to start at 7, you know, go down to the beach house and just kind of see your friends. And build it as a, as a, not a festival, but just a day in the park, basically. And we have 26 acres that we can spread it out over. So the paintball would be over by the big pavilion and then food vendors, you know, all the way around. And just, and just market it as a day in the park. Come down and maybe see your friends, you know, practice social distancing and we're going to, uh, you know, provide you with some basic hometown 4th of July festivities that don't need to be touched.
Some people might want to come down early, get something to eat for dinner, listen to the band and then watch the fireworks.
Yep.
Yeah, the real key is don't make it a city sanctioned event or festival, right? Because that's when you get into trouble. You know what I'm saying?
Well.
If people, if people are at the park, they're wel, they're welcome to be at the park. You know what I mean? If the yacht club wants to be open to serve beer, they're welcome to do that, you know?
It's really not a festival. I don't, I haven't, I don't, I have a clear conscience saying that we're going to put some food vendors down, have a band and suit off fireworks and it's not a festival. We're celebrating the 4th of July and we're doing it in a watered down version that is going to, a 26 area, um, park is okay to have that many people in. Um, there are going to be different areas in the park that are going to, you know, the beach is going to be busy, the harbor is going to be busy, you know, around the band is going to be busy, but.
I agree.
I would still have portageons because Denberg's does such a great job, so I would still have some portageons. Um, I might even scatter those this year around instead of, you know, putting them on the street. Um, that would eliminate a lot of congestion in the bathrooms. We always put like 40 portageons on the street because the beer tent was right there, you know, so you needed them, you know.
Well, we're not going to have the huge crowds, no, no parade, so there's not going to be.
Plus if we're starting a little bit later, we're not going to have.
Right, it's not starting at.
Hopefully, and we're not going to have the drunk fest that starts at around noon.
Noon.
Dang it. Oh, sorry.
My, if I could add, my concern is, as the one doing the food vending for the 4th of July, whether you call it under the 4th of July application, waive the fee or not, we still are authorizing that food vendor to be in Van Cleve Park operating. So we are sanctioning and allowing them. They can be self sufficient or whatever, but we are giving their approval to do that on the 4th of July. We are, we are paying for the band. Um, we are authorizing that.
There's, there's no, the governor's rules don't prevent food trucks from operating, right?
No, but what I'm saying is, you know, it's, you know, saying it's not a city event, you know, on the 4th of July is we are signing off on those. We could do it through the general food, food vending application. It's not the 4th of July one, you know, follow those ordinances. Because those rules are different than 4th of July rules specific on the, on the 4th of July.
Yeah, I think, I think that would make sense because we're not, we're not having the number of vendors.
Right.
And it's a, it's a much, much pared down event.
Sure.
I think if you do it too, you could advertise it like we were just talking, when you were talking. Acknowledge that, yes, we are doing an event, but we're encouraging, like kind of bring your own space or bring your own chair or something that acknowledges that, that we're encouraging space to be created. And there's methods that we've done to create that space. Um, I think if we, you know, go under the auspice that we're not doing a city event, we, we could get into more trouble than just acknowledging, hey, we're hosting an event and we've pared it down, we've pared it back and we're encouraging the public to follow the rules. And, and the rules are going to be laid out.
And we're not going to have the hordes of people coming down. We're going to have intermittent people coming down and taking a walk and, and doing certain things and, um, we're not having the band start at 1 o'clock and the paintball and the dunk tank and the, you know, we're just not going to have the people there. You're going to have lots of people going down once a day to go see the park. They're coming home to see their parents or their families for the 4th of July and they're going to take a walk down to the park or drive down to the park. People from Escanaba might also because they like to see people.
It's really, it's really the parade that brings everybody into town and down to the park.
Well, and, and all the events we have. I mean, people love to see jumping dogs and log rollings and, you know.
But it booms right after the parade, I mean, heads right down there, so this would be drastically different than.
Everything is, welcome to 2020.
Now, on that flip side, again, and again, I sound like a politician here. On the flip side, in my day job in law enforcement, I also know where now do we create some type of headache for Director Robinson and his crew where if you have some people who weren't practicing that social distancing and now you're going to get fearful from a citizen, concern citizen, say, well, it's an executive order, you should be enforcing it. Even though all along we haven't initially been or essentially have been doing that. Um, there's that other caveat to this whole mess as well.
Yeah, there will be, there will be those.
Well, yes, there will be.
Many people that don't like it, has liked it.
Yes. And I mean, you could kind of say that with the, even with the, the concert series. You know, we're promoting an event and I don't know what the, what, um, the public safety director's doing or how they're handling that. If, are they going to go down there and make sure people aren't sitting too close to each other or?
Nope. No. It's an impossible task.
It is an impossible task.
You don't know whether they live together or.
Right, and they could just say, well, no, we live together. And how you, you don't.
Really don't know.
You don't know.
No, and I know that, I know you folks know that, but I will tell you, trying to reason with somebody who don't understand that is a whole different matter.
I can imagine.
Eric, what do you, what do you think? You're the ones probably fielding a lot of phone calls if we do go through with this.
Well, I haven't been getting very many lately. We'll, we can do whatever directed as long as we try to keep it, you know, space it out the way we're saying. Would the yacht club have to get a special license for that or can they?
I'm not sure how their license works. I think that they have to have an enclosed area, but I don't know if they have to pull a separate license or not.
They usually pull a license for, for the 4th of July because a lot of non-members are.
In there.
Yep, so they'll pull a special license for that.
I don't know if they'll even have time to do that now. We're running kind of short, but, um.
Who's to say Lansing would authorize it?
No, well. And either or, I mean, I have three other places that hold licensing if we wanted to do the beer. Um, we have to also take into consideration that the firecracker run is still going on. So they're taking their precautions. Are we going to be able to, you know, the finish line is, everyone is social distancing, we could post the signs and that's not us doing it. That is the Kiwanis, of course, and they do a great job every year. And they feel that they can do that, but they're not going to be able to, you know, disperse huge crowds at the finish line and things like that. They'll be under 500 people though.
I see that's one thing that hasn't been canceled over the UP for the, for the summer is those kind of events, like Door to Shore is still scheduled to go on.
You can, you can pace, you could pace them out and stuff, you know, they're just not having mass starts and, you know.
Everything else has been canceled, Lord on the rocks and all, all the other fun stuff.
Marquette's been very proactive or very, um, strict on following the guidelines with City of Marquette.
Did they cancel their fireworks, Marquette?
Mm-hmm.
They did.
Well, just so it's no surprise when we've been discussing it, I haven't really said anything. I just feel there's too many ifs, so I would not be voting in favor of whatever's being presented, just so it's not a surprise to anyone.
No, and I don't think it'd be a surprise. I mean, but two weeks ago, I was on the one push and saying we can. I would primarily was trying to do this to open up a little bit more discussion and trying to come up with some solutions to just absolutely, no, we're not doing it. You know, I may, I may have talked myself into not. You know, because when you look at it, it's a, it's a, I'm looking at the map and this morning I spent a couple hours with a cup of coffee and I'm drawing different things out. Here's my chicken scratch here. And I like to try to be a problem solver and, you know, the problem is you, you also look at, you pull a lot of other variables into it like Director Robinson and his crew. You know, Eric, I'm sure if we do this, who's to say he's not going to get a call from Lansing? You know, there's been a threats out there from the governor's office about pulling, pulling, uh, somebody's 501, 3C or C3, 3PO or whatever license. So, you know, it's just, there's a lot of, there is, there's a lot of ifs, what ifs.
There's very little time to even pull it off.
Very little time to pull off and what, I guess what really irks me more than anything is you don't have, there's not enough gumption coming out of Lansing to at least have the decency to put a plan together to allow for these cities or these municipalities or something to try to follow some type of a, a plan. I mean, if I can do this in two hours of trying to come up with something a little simple, there's a lot smarter people in Lansing than I am that might be able to try to come up with some type of a plan or a solution so that whether it can be some type of small activities, I guess where, that's where I start getting a little irritated if you can't tell. I'm, I'm tired of Lansing not coming up with any answers.
Even, even a no.
Do as I say, not as I do.
You know, we looked at your plan, no because of this.
Or you know what, we can look at it, we can adjust this a little bit, if you adjust this, well, we're good with it. But when you can't get a call back, that's, in my opinion, it's asinine and irresponsible as a governor's office, but that's just my opinion.
Um, at the summer concert series, we are going to have a food vendor down there. Um, we are taking applications, first come, first served. It's not something that we're bidding out or anything, but people have wanted to go down there for the summer concert series and sell food because our concession isn't open. So we've had a couple of people wanting to do that. We're going to park it like in front of the garage at the beach house or whenever and they'll have to do everything they have to do for Thursday nights. Trying to help some local businesses out and still provide a service that we don't provide right now because of COVID. You know, I'm not opening up, you know, concessions and things like that. So we are, we are doing our best to do as much and as little as possible. So, you know, there's, there's definitely a, a fine line. We are having the firecracker run, we're having the fourth, uh, the fireworks, having the band. We can do all of that pretty good. You don't want food vendors or a, um, beer tent or something? Different options.
You know, I've, I've, I was all, I'm all for, I really want to do this, but you know, it just seems like there's too many unknowns. We're asking, we might be asking staff and other folks to do some things that they're not comfortable with and, you know, the public, some, some want it, some think that we should shut down for another year. You know, I mean, there's all extremes out there. Some people say, you know, runs the whole gamut. But at this point, I just, I mean, I really wanted to do this because like, like the mayor said, we just wanted to have a win for the folks, you know? Something that make them feel good and, um, but I just, I, I can't see, I can't really see us organizing this and then getting it all going in a week.
I'm good.
Ten days.
I'm good. But it's really your call. And we can even pare it down more or we can, I mean, I, I, your call. Y'all got to be real comfortable with it. I don't, you know, when I take that back, I don't think we're ever going to be real comfortable with anything right now. And so we, our job is to task, is it, is it worth the risk or is it worth, you know, pursuing it? You know, we have, there's never going to be a, oh, everybody says yes, we should do that, you know? Everybody says no, we should do that. So we have to kind of take all the risks into consideration. You want to pare it down and water it down a little bit more, we definitely can. Um, as far as public safety goes, they're going to be in the parks anyways because that's where the people are going to be. So, so they're going to be out there anyways and they've made it clear that they are not the COVID police, you know? They are there to keep people safe, you know, from, from all kinds of aspects, but they're not the COVID police, so.
Correct. So, so if we don't do this, we don't have a 4th of July event. If we have a food vendor that requests a permit to serve food on the 4th of July, will we issue that?
There is an ordinance, they have to apply. There is an ordinance, they have to apply like Nicole had indicated for the summer concert series. They have to fill that out, they have to put their intended requested location, um, the length of time. There's a permit fee schedule for how long they want to do it, a day, a week, you know, for, for the year, for the whatever. And then that is reviewed and if they meet all of those requirements with proof of insurance and, um, we would definitely ask for a COVID-19 plan as we made, you know, the, the firecracker run provided a COVID-19 plan for their event. Um, but there would be an application that would be signed off on and, and approved and they would be, you know, a permitted use unless you tell me that there will not be food vending on July 4th, you know, as, because there's no activity. You know, with that, it's just going to be an open park. Otherwise there are, you know, people have requested, you know, um, on their property, there's a, a food vending truck that does it on Halloween every year, you know, and stuff and, and those are, that is approved. Um, so, but this is, you know, that's why I'm trying to point out there, there is a fine, there was a line between food vending on the 4th of July for the City of Gladstone, a separate permit with rules and things like that. There's a separate ordinance that is for if you want to be a food and confections.
Yep, so that's my question, yeah. Would we handle it just like any other day of the year then? Or would we just say no?
We've been going out of our way on that day to say no, so that even be.
Right.
That doesn't make much sense. He was on July 5th, if they want to do it, we say yes?
That's what I'm saying, right, yeah, so I just want to make it clear.
Right.
That's my question to you guys is that if I get an application under that ordinance, that is not the 4th of July application.
It's, it's the regular.
I would kind of need some guidance and direction of where in Van Cleve Park could they go or not at all?
Well, that's.
Where, you know.
Yeah, we're probably limited, most of it's underwater.
Well, we, we did talk about that too, because where we supply power and vendor row there, the traditional vendor row on the 4th of July, okay, if it's not underwater, you know, and things like that. Or if we pick out certain spots that would be allowed, they may have to be self sufficient. There may not be power, there may not be water, you know, or things like that, so.
Yeah, many of them are.
That was going to be my question to you guys, is if you are going to allow vending, even though the park's open like normal, because normally we don't run into that ordinance, we don't issue under that ordinance because you have to apply under the 4th of July application on that day.
And we don't allow for food vendors in the park because we offer concessions.
Usually have a concession.
So this, now we don't have a concession, so food vendors are welcome to come in the park. Take into consideration that we don't want to take away from our downtown businesses also.
Right.
Um, and that, that type of thing. So it is, it's, it's a totally different era. I do have Daryl Serio already booked, so I mean, and we have a COVID plan in place for the beach house. So I would, you know, we need to make that decision for sure tonight. The firecracker run is already on and the fireworks are already on. So if you guys want to start from there and then decide what you want to add or if you want to take away.
Music is no different than Thursday night concerts in the park. I don't, you know, I don't see that being any different other than you may have more people there, but that's their free will, right? That's a limited, small block of time too, right?
Yep, 7 to 9.
That's the same thing as, same as, um.
Summer concert series.
Kim, as far as the vendors go, are we making it knowing that they are responsible for their, their own COVID plan? Making sure that they have to be.
So when we spoke to, um, uh, the Kiwanis regarding their run, they were asking us, what is the COVID guidelines? And I said, you know, you guys need to come up with your COVID plan and, and you guys as an organization and as your own event with this, what can you do, what can you not do, what are you putting out there to the public that says this is what we are doing? Um, and so they came up with a, a. And so, they came up with a, a great plan, but it's their plan. It's not, they turned it into the City of Gladstone. Same thing with the, the ball field, you know, the ball fields are ours, but in Farmer's Market, they each had to have their own COVID plan for their event and their organization's activities there. So, that's what I would be asking, one, just the general question, are we issuing any kind of food truck under the normal ordinance on the Fourth of July?
Or are we making a special?
Exceptions.
It's a no for that day because there might be 500 people there?
I mean, we haven't suspended it to date, have we? The, the normal ordinance has been in effect to date.
Right. The only difference is that we do not issue food vending licenses on that day, you know, we.
It'd be under the general, it's going to be under the general vendor on the Fourth of July then.
Right. So, this is in reverse of that. Are you going to make a decision that we do allow food vending in the Van Cleve Park on July 4th? Not our event, but.
Because we're allowing food vending now because we don't offer a concession. So, if you say we're offering food vending or the ability to have a food truck in the park and then say, except for the Fourth of July? You know, that's your call.
Well, but with that too, we're saying at the beach house, one vendor, one location. So, if you are going to say yes to that, I would like some direction on where can they be?
But does.
Can they have power or are we saying you have to be self-sufficient, give a COVID-19 plan, you take care of your in and out and six-foot and hand washing and all that? And give me that and an application plan, so.
Does the ordinance exclude the Fourth of July?
I think it says something about upon other, you know, a permit or something, so.
Normally on the Fourth of July, we have this other big event that has its own set of guidelines and this year, we're not really, we're not having that big event.
Right. That's what I'm saying is that.
We would revert back to the ordinance and the ordinance doesn't say anything about exclude the Fourth of July, right?
Correct. Not specifically like that. We can set our own parameters and our own rules and, and that's basically what it's been is on the Fourth of July, you're not going to get a food, food license permit anywhere at another location. Because either you're going to compete with our downtown or our park on the Fourth of July, you know, which if we're already having food vending down there, you have to be a part of that, you know? We just don't grant under that, so there isn't nothing, there isn't that. It's just.
Yeah, so I would think if we're not having a Fourth of July, I mean, if somebody wanted to pull one for the Fourth, under the ordinance, they would just have to comply with the state's guidelines.
And, and like I said, normally it is, Van Cleve Park is not an intended location, you know? So, they have to put where they want an intended location. Like the example I gave was on their private property on Halloween with their licensed food truck parked there. You know, that's been approved in the past, so I'd need a little bit of guidance on where and how many, you know, we would grant.
Those need commission approval?
No.
Okay.
Nicole, did you say the band is booked already that's happening?
I kind of went on, on the thing that we're going to try to make it happen as much as possible. I didn't guarantee his, his fee, however, he's been a band that we've had forever and ever and ever. So, I wouldn't, he's given up other, other things to be here. So, I would like to either have him play or basically still compensate him. But he hasn't asked for that, any kind of compensation?
In the ordinance, on the regular day for a food vendor or concession, do we have a limit on that? How many permits are issued?
Like I said, I mean, in one year, we could have two, you know what I mean, you know?
But is there a limit on the day?
No.
In the ordinance?
It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say.
Right, so, but it's, yeah.
We would probably would want, or at least you're asking us to try to set a limit.
I'm asking for some guidance. Normally, this is not a problem on the Fourth of July because we cut it off and say we won't, the city will not issue food vending permits unless you are doing the Fourth of July activity. That's just out. Now that it's reversed, am I going to get 10 applications for intended location Van Cleve Park? Well.
Nothing within 300 feet of each other?
How many realistic locations do we have with power that are separated?
Well, as long as you limit them, I mean, if it's said they can't be within 300 feet of each other or something like that to keep them apart.
Or, and then the caveat to that is they say, "Well, I'm self-sufficient. I, I never rely on power or water."
And we can still tell them where they can go.
Right. Oh, for sure, for sure, but.
I mean, how many, is there like five good spots, separate spots, you know, and make it five, you know?
So, our, normally our power is right there on vendor row or by the ball field, you know, on the buy home plate there is a.
I thought we were talking about like spreading them all.
Yeah, right.
Maybe have one down by Kids' Kingdom and maybe one by the beach house, maybe one there.
I don't know the power in that area.
Whatever, but, yeah.
I mean, if we just pared it down to the bare minimum of a band and allow food vendors applications, they have to go by the reg, we'd go by the regular ordinance because we're canceling the Fourth of July event. But we are having a band like the Thursday night concert series and you already said we're having food vendor at that.
At the beach house?
Not for that night, but we could put one there for that night.
But in future Thursday night events.
For the future concerts, people want to have one there also?
I mean, if we just ran it like that, just that, even that simple, no beer tent, no paintball, band's going to be playing and say we are going to run, run it under the regular ordinance, not the Fourth of July ordinance for accepting food vendors and they have to comply with all state guidelines.
It's theirs. It's their, I mean, we're issuing a permit for them to operate on our property, like we are the ball field or whatever. But it is their activity, not.
If their, if their plan does not cover all of the guideline suggestions, that's their problem.
Correct.
We don't, their COVID plan and we're not saying, "Well, you can't share helmets" or you can't, you know, you know. They have to come up with their own COVID plan and then if something happens, it's their responsibility.
Yes.
They'll be inspected by the.
They'll be inspected too, yeah.
Which we don't do.
And they have reasonable, they have expectations.
Yep, and we don't inspect them usually. That is done by an outsourced, you know, the health department and things, so it's guaranteed to be thorough.
We can take a vote on this, we want it straight up, so that way it's not so cumbersome.
We could throw a motion out there. I mean, we could have multiple motions.
Yeah, we should probably, probably attack this invite.
Maybe especially for, for Kim.
Somebody want to make a motion to have the.
But I'll make a motion that we have the band at the, at the beach house. The same, you know, in the, in the same fashion that we have the Thursday night music in the park.
I'll support that.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Stuzinski, supported by Commissioner Hunter to have a band on the Fourth of July at the beach house.
From seven to nine, is that what I said?
Seven to nine. Thereabouts.
Yep.
Any more discussion?
It just feels like circumvention to me, but that's just my own personal opinion.
I didn't hear who seconded it. I'm sorry.
Might as well bring the controversy in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Akala? We have to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Akala, no. Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes. The motion passes. The next discussion would be whether, what was the next one?
Are we going to allow food vendor? Because I think.
Well, are we going to disallow food vendors?
Disallow, we have to disallow.
We already allow them under the ordinance.
They're allowed, yep, to apply whatever I'm looking for directions.
Throw some restrictions on.
Yeah. Even during the regular, if this wasn't a Fourth of July event or the day, the day. I would still be a little more apprehensive to allow a number of different food vendors down at the park. I'd like to still see it. I know we're talking about Thursday, having a food vendor there. I, I am seeing other places having these pop-up little food vendors where people are coming to just visit my hometown and they had a little, it was a, it was a, like a Mexican, a Mexican food, food vendor that people were coming, so.
There was a couple.
I don't care if it's the Fourth of July or not, I still wouldn't like to see, I still would not want to see a half a dozen or more food vendors down at the park.
No.
On a regular basis.
We may want to consider that for the short term, more than just the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Right, that's my question is in the regular ordinance, is there a limit on a regular day? I mean, you say you get a couple a year, what if all of a sudden one day for whatever reason, you got 10?
That's what I'm imagining right now is tomorrow I get a call for 10 people and I want to be at Van Cleve Park.
I think we should either just say we disallow it on the Fourth because altogether or we limit it to a certain number.
I think we should limit it to the duration of the governor's orders.
What was, I'm sorry.
We should limit it for the duration of the governor's orders, restrict the number or how close together they can be. I mean, we should, we shouldn't let it be unlimited until this is lifted.
Yeah.
That's a good point, really. You know, it hasn't been an issue before yet, it's.
I know that like Skirbeck's had something in Escanab, a couple of events where they had food and I don't know what that looked like.
I participated in that as a customer, not as a, not working or anything, but they had an entry and an exit and you, and they had someone come out and take your order. Now, this is just how they operated it. They did an excellent job. Someone came to your car with a mask, they took your order from a distance. Then that order was, they told, that order was relayed to the concession stand, the food was then prepared and another person, separate person took that to, brought that out to you. So, you never even went to the concession stand. Now, that's just the way they chose to operate it, you know, with maximum distancing and minimum contact, which I thought was very well done. But that would be again up to on a Thursday night if we have, they're inspected, so we can't, we can't start guessing what they're going to do.
This would be, I mean, I would think like a food vendor, normal food vendors would be no different than like going to the Dairy Flow. Where you walk up to the window, you place your order and then you receive your order. So, it'd be a mobile version of that.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I think we, we should, you know, not let a whole bunch of them pile up on top of each other for sure.
No.
No, and I kind of like the idea we're spending around, we're putting one down at the band, or excuse me, down at the beach house. If you have another one, if we could put another one up around the dryer area where the beer tent would normally would be up in that location and maybe spread another one down over by the yacht club, so you have maybe three, maybe three's all we're looking at.
Maybe by the pavilion?
Or by the pavilion or something.
I, I think we could probably fit four safely that would, you know, be well within the compliance of the executive orders. I mean, they can operate. We just don't want them all on top of each other. You know, and, and maybe we won't even get four that are interested.
We're not.
You know, it's pretty late.
Yeah, we have restaurants on Delta Avenue that are closer together than what we're trying to propose right now for these vendors.
Absolutely.
Granted, they're outdoor.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to solicit vendors.
No.
We're just going to open it up and they can.
Correct.
Right. Normally what's done is long before now, applicant, you know, the, the applications would go out to the existing vendors that were, participated the year before they have a deadline, pay your fee, get back to me. If you don't, then if we have an open space, then I would advertise. It's been a long time since we had to advertise.
Is that, is that fee 4.50?
Yeah. It's, it's less for a nonprofit if they were a nonprofit group, but it's, I think it's 4.50. So, that would not be the case and that is nowhere near what our ordinance says, you know.
The, the regular ordinance, what's, the fee is 4.50?
Yeah, I think for a day, it's like $3.
Isn't it, it's in this packet, isn't it?
It is in this packet, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, the fee schedule is in there.
Fee schedule.
Maybe, or is it in the ordinance?
Are you telling like $4.50 or $450?
For the regular food, like $3 for a day. Or you can do it by a week, you can do it by a month or a year permit, and I believe that's in the ordinance, not Iowa law here. What I was looking for is exactly that, some guidance if you're going to.
That's highway robbery.
$2 for one day. Yeah, $2 a day.
That's one draft.
So, in order to change that one, we'd have to change our ordinance, which I would love to do to get the fees out of the ordinance for that section, but like I said, the, the two a year besides the Fourth of July has not warranted amending that ordinance yet, so. But this discussion with this year.
Oh, yeah, right here. Sales are products from temporary structure, confections, food, tobacco, tobacco products, one day, $2.
Oh, so I was, $3.
I like your price better.
Period not extending one week, one month, $10 for a month. Or they could go in for the year for 35, so.
But that is still, you know, based on our approval, so what I'd need is like this, like you're, you're kind of talking is guidance of how many, we dictate where you're going to go and you may or may not be interested in that, but that could be.
On the fee schedule, it says that the location of the temporary structure is subject to approval as per the ordinance. I don't know what the ordinance says about.
Which I believe is based on the manager, you know, with.
So, we can, so.
So, what it works in conjunction with is like the park rules, you know, and the park rules for things as there wouldn't, if we have, you know, a concession, our own city concession, we're not going to allow food vending to be right next to our concession, so. That's why there was guidance there before, like the, the Halloween event that I get for that food truck, which was fine, always worked out. It was actually her property, but she still was required to bullet permit with the city, so.
I'll make a motion that for July 4th this year, we allow no more than four food vendors to operate under the normal fee schedule and location as stated in the fee schedule, subject to approval as per ordinance, Section 10-192. So, they would still pay a fee, but it'd be $2.
For that day.
For the day.
Did you say for the Fourth? Just the Fourth?
Well, I said just the Fourth because I'm, well, yeah.
Do you want to extend that for the duration of the executive order?
I would, I would amend my motion then to remove the stipulation of July 4th and have it extended to the duration of the state mandated, is it the state of emergency? Is that what she's, we're operating under still?
Executive order, yep. And this is for, within the Van Cleve location.
Correct, yes.
I'll support that.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Mantala, supported by Commissioner Stuzinski. Any other discussion?
Are, are we covering everything you're looking for, Kim?
Yes, because going on there is, I'm thinking the beach house where the Lions beer tent used to go by the football scoreboard there, there is power there. We could space out on the end of vendor row and then I think you guys said something about.
I would leave that, I would leave that up to staff and the manager to approve that if we even get four, might get none.
I have six right now that want to.
Okay, well.
That was pre-pier.
Right. I've taken three phone calls from my vendors, you know, whether they're the same, I don't know, but.
And that was, that was in Van Cleve Park you'd mentioned, that was part of the, the motion, right, from the Van Cleve Park area?
That's what I got.
Yes.
So, just further discussion, right, so that allows, so we're allowing four, up to four in the Van Cleve Park area? So, say on the same day, we have one that wants to be somewhere else out in the wilderness, then that stipulation of four does not apply?
Correct.
So, that could be five or six.
If they want to be.
Were in other locations, wherever that may be.
Whatever approved, whatever approved the locations under the ordinance.
Yep. But we'll limit it to four in the park.
For the duration.
I just want to clarify that, thank you.
Which would make sense because before Van Cleve was off limits because we had our own concession, so that makes sense.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Akala?
No.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
You have listed paintball on here?
They said no.
Well, okay.
Pretty sure under the ordinance, and I don't have the ordinance book right now, but just, you know, FYI, is we can allow up to four people in the park, but that does have to be okayed by the recreational board, you know? Where they go, how many we have, but I can't have more than four unless it's a special event, it would have to come back to the commission.
Any other discussions around the Fourth of July?
I had just heard paintball mentioned, but I didn't have an answer. We're not even considering.
No, we're not even considering that.
Who runs that?
Is that to spot you later?
Spot you later. My name is escaping me right now.
We're not, we're not pursuing beer?
No.
No, I think if anything, it would solely up to the yacht club, if they wanna try and do something then on their own.
I think that might stretch, stretch us.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're done, we're finished with the parks and rective discussion? Anybody have anything else? Move on to new business, then, the investment management services proposal?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. My name's Bob Bellantino, by the way. I'm with First Bank's Investment Management Group. In terms of a process tonight, what I thought I would do is maybe take a fly overview of the proposal that you all received in your package, and then touch on what an illustrated investment portfolio might look like, and then reserve the balance of the time to get ever deep into the weeds if you guys wanna go with it in terms of questions or anything that wasn't, that wasn't clear in the proposal. I think, you know, by and large, you're all familiar with First Bank. We're headquartered right down the street at 1400 Delta Avenue. A couple of things you may not know about First Bank. Number one, we have the largest trust and investment group in the Upper Peninsula. Our trust and investment group operates up Marquette and Eskenaba. Collectively, we serve over 600 client accounts. We have over 600, well, right around 600 million in assets under management. Prior to COVID, we had over 600 million, but as you might expect, the market punishes everybody to a degree. So we're a little under 600 million in assets under management at the moment. We have a staff of nine investment professionals split between Marquette and Eskenaba. Collectively, we have more than 300 years of cumulative experience managing investment portfolios and doing things very similar to what's proposed here. You know, on the institutional side of things, we have roughly 175 institutional clients in the investment management group. And those clients collectively have roughly 180 million in assets that we manage for them. And I think it's important to, I guess, isolate the institutional numbers from the personal accounts, because institutional clients have a little bit different needs. And so I guess I want everybody to be aware that, you know, we understand the institutional relationships, just like we understand the personal relationships, and we're also quick to deal with some of those specialized needs. In addition, we also have two voyeur brokerage firms, which, you know, wouldn't necessarily come into play in this relationship, but just in terms of the broadness of our offering, we do have an Eskenaba voyeur brokerage and a Marquette voyeur brokerage. With respect to, with respect to my background, I've been managing governmental investments for 29 years, roughly. Prior to joining First Bank last year, I was the city treasurer. I think some of you know that, but for those that don't, I was Eskenaba city treasurer for 29 years, and I managed their surplus funds portfolio. When I came to work in 91 for the city of Eskenaba, I developed a surplus funds management program where we pooled all of our assets and basically built and designed the type of program that I'm proposing for the city of Gladstone. Eskenaba's surplus funds portfolio is roughly 30 to 32 million, depending on the day. And, you know, like I said, I ran that for almost 29 years with the city of Eskenaba. I also managed the public safety retirement fund. That's roughly a $30 million portfolio. And so several years before I retired from the city, one of the officers at First Bank approached me about the possibility of joining quarter suits. And at that point, I was too close to retirement, and while he had heard that I was planning to retire last year, and so he approached me about resurrecting that discussion. And so we did, and First Bank became my, my new home of employment in the city of Eskenaba. So, um, that's my background. What, what we've proposed is a surplus funds management offering for the city of Gladstone. It would work very similar to the, the city of Eskenaba's offering. What we would do at the point, as your investment advisor, we would construct for you a Public Act 20 compliant portfolio. Public Act 20 is the Michigan statute that governs investment in governmental surplus funds, municipal surplus funds. And so, you know, that's the important thing that we all have to pay attention to in this world, is compliance with Public Act 20. But, you know, number two, we would also make sure we're compliant with the city's investment policy statement as well, because that differs in some slight respects from Public Act 20. In, in doing so, there are a couple of key objectives that, that we would be looking at. You know, foremost, we're always concerned with safety and liquidity within the investment portfolio. And so everything we do is going to be screened for, for safety. Everything that we would put in the portfolio would be investment grade. We wouldn't, we wouldn't even approach the line of a sub-investment grade. You know, mostly, we're dealing with A, AA, AAA rated bonds. The investment grade spectrum goes all the way down to triple B, below triple B bonds. But, you know, the pond we're fishing in is, is high investment grade offerings. The goal, once we, we check those boxes, the, the goal is to generate spendable income for the city of Gladstone. You know, looking at your, your surplus funds balances, you know, I think we can, we can put them to better use. And I've always viewed surplus funds as another revenue source, particularly whenever you're at the city of Eskenaba. You have your revenue sharing, you have your tax revenue, you have your fee revenue, you have your utility revenue. But another significant source should be and can be your investments in your surplus funds. And so the goal is to generate spendable income for the, the city of Gladstone in that process. I'll be totally upfront and candid. There are a few challenges in the fixed income world at the moment. COVID has turned everything upside down, and everybody's lives have been affected, and the investment world included in that as well. When I started talking with Vicky several months ago, I think, you know, this conversation probably started in December, January, perhaps, you know, rates were, were low at that time, but they were still decent and, and, you know, still something that could provide a meaningful return. Since the inception of those discussions, rates have kind of been cut in half for the most part. And you can, you can nitpick which end of the yield curve you're at, but if you, if you look at it in general, rates have been cut in half. At the same time, I view that as a temporary phenomenon, and I believe that once COVID passes, rates are going to go back to the, the levels they were, at least pre-COVID. The reason for this dip in rates is 100% due to Fed intervention and the, you know, 3-plus trillion that they've injected into the money supply. And by and large, they've used that money to buy treasuries, they've used it to buy, they're buying corporate bonds, they're buying municipal bonds. And so what that's done is, it's driven rates down. The Fed has certainly telegraphed that there is no limit to the amount of money they can print to stimulate the economy, but I, I think common sense tells you there has to be limits to that. And common sense also tells you that COVID will pass, and, and once it does, and once that stimulus begins to taper off, I think you're gonna see an uptick in rates. I, I think this is temporary. And, you know, I don't mean to be so doom and gloom to suggest that it's not a worthwhile endeavor. It's a worthwhile endeavor. There, there's still meaningful yield out there. It's just not as fruitful as it was prior to COVID. So that's kind of the backdrop and the landscape, if you will. What I'm proposing for the city of Gladstone, again, is similar to some of our other municipal accounts. We're, we're looking at a, an investment portfolio comprised of US agency securities, Michigan CDs with a local preference, some municipal bonds, and money market instruments. This is, you know, for the most part, plain vanilla in terms of the investment world. You know, we're not venturing out into a handful of other things that are permitted under Public Act 20, but that I don't really think are altogether appropriate to municipal accounts of this size. And so, you know, that's in a sense what we're talking about. And I passed out prior to the meeting, an illustrated portfolio, just to kind of give you all a sense of what an investment portfolio for the city of Gladstone might look like. I sat down this morning, and I, I just pulled up some issues and looked at some rates. What that represents, again, is just an illustrated portfolio. It's not necessarily exactly what I would put, because the offerings come and go on a daily basis, and rates change on a daily basis. And, you know, that contains some concentrations in munis that I would spread out. But if you think of it in terms of investments that are, are like or similar, that would be laid out similar to that. In terms of a, a strategy, your investment policy statement limits you to 12-year maximum maturity, so we would stick within that. The approach I would use within that maturity structure would be somewhat of a, I guess, I would term it a laddered barbell strategy. A true barbell strategy would be weighted on each end of the spectrum. In other words, you would have half of your money short, you know, one to three years, and the other half long, say, nine to 12 years, and nothing in the middle. You know, my approach to your portfolio would be to overweight the short end, overweight the long end, but still have exposure in the middle. And, you know, I can get into the rationale for that in the question part if somebody wants more detail. But in a nutshell, the reason that I would take that approach is I would cover the short end with CDs, because the yields there are a lot better than treasuries or agencies at the short end of the curve right now. And that's not always the case, but at least for the time being, I would overweight there, because you get a little more bang for the buck in doing that. And then, you know, on the long end of the curve, you have to do something to reach for yield. And so I would overweight on that end, using callable agencies and municipal securities, because if you don't go out a handful of years, you, you don't get the yields that you need to achieve the returns that you wanna get. And so, you know, together, being overweighted on the short end and overweighted on the long end, it comes together and still provides a reasonable average maturity, somewhere in the, I would say, 5% to 6% range is where, or 5% to 6% range, I should say, is where it would like to shake out. A little bit about, you know, First Bank and the strategy. Being the size that we are, we have resources that others might not have available. One of the things that we do frequently is utilize our economies of scale and our purchasing power in the fixed income world. You can get better yields by buying in large quantities. And so what we'll do is, is we will buy million-dollar blocks, $2 million blocks of fixed income security, and then we'll portion that block across, you know, maybe eight or 10 different customer accounts. But when we do that, we can get better pricing than if we were spending, say, $50,000 or $60,000. So that's one of the, the things that we're able to offer. We have some other pretty robust resources in the fixed income world as well. We currently use a bond trading platform called ICE Bond Buying, and what that allows us to do is trade anonymously with other bond dealers. The, the way that you get bonds in the markets is different than stocks. Bonds don't trade on an exchange like the stock market. Bonds trade between dealers, between brokers, between those who have inventory and those that don't, or they trade on the new issue markets. And so, you know, getting access to bond pricing, to good bond pricing, can sometimes be challenging. And so the way we skin that cat, if you will, is, number one, economies of scale, buying large blocks and portioning. But, you know, number two, the bond trading platform that we have allows us to trade anonymously with bond dealers. And so on that platform, I can, I can purchase a million-dollar treasury from another bond dealer, and I don't have to mark that up for client account. It's a basically dealer-to-dealer type trade. And so we're able to get better buying power than others might get. If you buy a bond from a broker, for example, that broker has to go buy it from a dealer, mark that bond up, and sell it to you for your account. And of course, the smaller the bond, the more markup, the larger the bond, the less markup there is on it. The other thing we're doing as well, there's a more robust bond trading platform out there called Market Access, and we're right in midstream onboarding on that. And so we expect to have that done in the next month or two. Once Market Access is onboarded, we'll have access to even a wider variety of offerings. It will more than quadruple what, what's available to us. So again, it provides us better pricing, more options for the client. In terms of bonds, I guess some of the strategies I like right now in the bond market, you know, things change by the day, things change by the year, move around, but I see opportunity, if you will, in the callable agency bond market. The federal agencies right now, as interest rates have been declining, they like to issue callable debt, because they can call it due, they can refinance it, and they can put it back out there at a lower rate of interest. And the advantage to buying the callable agency debt is, they pay you a premium for the uncertainty of when that money might come due. But in a portfolio like this, if I buy a five-year callable agency, and it, it gets called tomorrow, we can just roll the money into another callable agency issue. What's more important in a portfolio like this is just keeping a certain amount of cash liquid to meet the city's operating needs. And it doesn't have to be cash, cash, but short-term investments that aren't going to fluctuate day to day. And so having a little bit of maturity uncertainty doesn't hurt a portfolio like this, and then you get paid for accepting that as, as an investor. And so that space is, is producing, I think, pretty well right now. The agency markets, or, I'm sorry, the municipal markets have been very good. I'm seeing a trend there, and the, the spreads are starting to close now. But, you know, with COVID, we were doing a lot of agency buying for client accounts, because there was fear, and fear generates uncertainty and affects pricing. But, you know, those are the kinds of things that we keep an eye on, on a day-to-day basis, and we're always looking for opportunities. We're always, we're fishing in the pond that has the biggest spread, if you will, managing our portfolio. So I just wanted to bring those things up as, to find out some of the things that we're doing on a, a day-to-day basis for our client accounts. I guess any fixed income discussion should be part and parcel with a GASB discussion. GASB is Governmental Accounting Standard Board. Vicky's very familiar with GASB and their regulations. But one of the things that they do somewhat unfairly is, they require you to mark your securities to market and report in your financials annually unrealized gains and losses. And so your portfolio very rarely will realize gains and losses. The idea is to hold investments to maturity, if you can. We would only sell in a portfolio like this if we had to fund an unanticipated cash need, or if we were rebalancing, because we were either below or above our target average maturity. But GASB says that if there's a value change in the market value of your securities, you have to record that, whether or not you recognize that gain or not. And so sometimes, when there are significant interest rate movements in the market, especially if there's a significant upward movement in rates, there would be unrealized losses in the investment portfolio. You'll never realize those losses, because you're holding those securities to maturity. And when you buy them, you know what your yield, and you know what your return to maturity are going to be at that point, and that's not going to change, because of anything GASB says or does. But it can be misleading to the public or others that are putting eyes on it when they see unrealized gains or losses booked in the investment portfolio. You may have experienced that in the past. I don't know if Multibank was buying anything that would have been subject to market value fluctuation. But, you know, if it's the first time you've, you've been in the markets, I think it's important for me to point that out to you on the front end. Not to be concerned, but you have to be able to explain it, is, is the key. but you have to be able to explain it is the key. In terms of the proposal itself, the services that are covered under the proposal are foremost management of the investment portfolio itself, monthly statements, annual statements, annual summary statements, performance monitoring. What we would do is work with Vicki to create a performance benchmark that we would measure against so that you know how we're doing relative to the bond market in general. And we can also do any customized reporting that the city council might want to see. DA 20 requires a quarterly report through city councils that we could develop in conjunction with the administration, whatever types of reporting would be beneficial in that regard. Also includes custody of assets. We would be the asset custodian and provide safekeeping for everything that's in the portfolio. And that would include local CDs. We buy local CDs for lots of client accounts and provide the safekeeping for that as well. Customer service, I want to touch on that a little bit. The proposal talks a little bit about what makes us a little different on the customer service front, but I wanted to point some of that out as well. The most important thing on the customer service side is because we're a bank trust department, we are also a fiduciary under the law. Not all investment managers are willing to accept a fiduciary status. A fiduciary status holds you to a higher level, and we're beholden to always act in the best interest of the city of Gladstone and not put our corporate interests ahead or not put our personal interests ahead. And so, you know, with that comes full transparency. The fee that was quoted is a fully transparent fee. That's not always the case in the investment business, but we will never be compensated in any way that would not be fully disclosed to you ahead of time. And so that's important to make mention of. Also, with all of my clients, everybody can contact me 24/7. Everybody knows that I'm available. If they're working on weekends or if they're working in the evening and, you know, they have a question about something in the investment portfolio, you know, I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the notion that you can call me anytime, and I'm happy to help. If I'm on vacation, we appoint a backup manager for the portfolio. Ben Zierbert up in Marquette, who's my boss, the head of the Trust and Investment Group, would be assigned as backup on this particular account. And Ben has more than 30 years in the trust and investment business and is well-schooled in this type of thing. Ben also has municipal accounts of his own, and he's also a township treasurer in his afterlife. So he's the right person to, to serve as your backup manager should he be appointed on the account. And finally, the fee. What's, what's the fee for our services? The fee quote is 15 basis points or 15 hundredths of a percent annually on the value of the portfolio. So assuming a $6 million portfolio, it's a $9,000 annual fee. And what we do is we break the fee up in monthly increments, and it's deducted and shown on the client statement each month. And so you'll always see what you're paying on a monthly basis, but that's how the fee schedule works. It's a significant discount from our standard fee schedule, but given the low-rate environment that we're in right now, you know, I have to be able to provide a meaningful return to you in addition to the fee. And so we discounted it very significantly for that relationship. Probably a good time, questions, comments, concerns? We can get into the weeds on this as far as you guys want to go.
Is that it for the fee? There isn't an annual fee? No, nothing?
Wait, there is an annual fee, but it's waived for this account. Normally, it's $500.
Is it common to take the, looking on your spreadsheet, you're saying, you know, with the $7 million investment, the $74,000, to roll that back in to the account and reinvest that? Or is that different than you would for, like, IRA?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, it's, on your spreadsheet, you show a estimated 1% average yield, so income of $74,000. Is it, is it allowable to reinvest that money, roll that back into the?
Yes, and you raise a good point from a mechanical standpoint, but that's what I should get to the mic here so we can, so everybody can hear. The way the portfolio would work mechanically is most of the bonds that are proposed would have a coupon payment semi-annually. And so those coupon payments would be reinvested into other securities as they come up along with bonds that would mature. They would also be reinvested. So to answer your question, everything would get rolled back in, and then whatever would be distributed to the city to pay bills or for any other needs that you would have would then come out of the portfolio.
The year-to-date yields that you're showing, is this what you're seeing because of the COVID? Is it usually a little higher than this?
Yeah, that's, that's actually the yield to worst. There are two yield numbers on there.
Okay.
I quote a yield to worst and a yield to maturity. The yield to worst applies when we're talking about a callable bond, because if that bond is called on the worst call date, that's the lowest possible yield you could incur. If the bond is never called, then the yield you would get would be the yield to maturity. And this is probably getting too far into the weeds, but a bond, a callable bond priced at 100 is going to have the same yield to maturity as the yield to call because you're buying it at 100. It's the discount or premium that you would pay on the bond that creates the difference between yield to call and yield to maturity.
I see in your proposal, the investment management agreement, that there are two different things that one could choose from. Have you already decided what you wanted to do, Eric and Vicki?
No.
I'm talking about whether the advisor will be fully invested in the account or the other option, and then whether you want monthly or quarterly reports. There's like a box to check on what you wanted. I didn't know if you made a decision yet.
You know, almost all of our municipal finance do take monthly reporting.
I think so.
Their account is typically required.
I certainly don't have any other questions. You do a fine job of informing us in detail what you're proposing.
I'm kind of an investment nerd.
Really? I would have never guessed.
I'm not the most fun guy at the party, but I do truly enjoy this world, and this is, this is what I like to do.
It's obvious.
You know, it's really about helping municipalities and serving clients. I enjoy my job, and I love the financial markets, and I have a soft spot for the bond markets in particular. Just because they don't operate like the stock market, you know, there's much more of a human touch to it. It's more interactive, and it's more about bidding and trying to find the deal as opposed to, you know, going to your online brokerage account and hitting buy because it's, the stock is at the market at that point in time. So I do enjoy the activity in this world very much.
That's a logical decision.
And it's an opportunity to really try to take advantages of imbalances in the market. You know, the, the stock market is so efficient that it's, it's really hard to get an upper hand or get some leverage. But, you know, fixed income markets, they're trying to correct those imbalances, but they still exist, and it's, it's always a good feeling when you can capitalize on those imbalances, especially with respect to the muni markets and some of those imbalances that took place when COVID hit. It was a great buying opportunity for us, and I wish it was still that way, but there will be another imbalance, and we'll take advantage of it when it comes.
Full disclosure, I know Mr. Valentine for about 20 years. I worked with him at Eskenaba, more so as a, as HR, but I also was on the Public Safety Pension Board, and he obviously was the investor or oversaw the pension. He did a nice job. He's right, he is an investment geek. Does a very good job with our, he did a very good job with the portfolio. This is not to bolster the rest of the commission to say we had to go with him or his service or the bank service, but one thing I do, I do trust, I didn't trust a lot of his HR decision, I'm just joking, but I did trust his investment knowledge when it came to our pension funds. So he did a nice job there.
We're looking for a motion to...
I think, I think it's at the next one.
Yeah, we're gonna... Investment Management Services, we told them? Either approve the approach, motion to either approve the proposal or not?
I move we approve the proposal as presented.
How's support?
A motion to approve the proposal by Judy Akala and support by Commissioner Hunter. Any more discussion?
The only thing, Mr. Mayor, I was looking at was the recommendation was going to be approved or look at approving or not approving at the July 13th meeting.
That was my question. Was there a reason for that delay, the date on there? Was there something the manager or treasurer wanted to look at?
I didn't want to leave Ms. Akala out there hanging, so.
Yeah, thanks.
We did not have any more interest. Bay Bank, who we have most of, you know, our large checking account with, they don't do investment services like this. You know, they said they'll, of course, they'll, they'll write any kind of a CD that we want. State Bank did not. I reached out to them, you know, gave them our investment portfolio, or investment policy. They did not get back to me yet, but same thing, you know, if they're, in any event, we could do a CD with them also. There wasn't any, anything else. You know, Eric and I had just thought that, you know, he would give his proposal, you know, and talk about it, and then we thought maybe let you guys think about it for a little while, but if you feel comfortable enough to go ahead and, you know, approve it, then...
Either way, we need a motion. We're gonna push it or...
Mm-hmm.
I, I feel comfortable with it. I think you reached out to everybody locally and...
I just like the fact that it's hands-on, and he can just talk to, talk to Bob about it, and we've never had anybody like that before. That other investment group was like a mystery.
Down in downstate, right. That's, that's what I like also, is that they're here. So you can approve the, the proposal if you would like to tonight, or you can...
We have a motion and support. We can put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe and healthy, everybody.
Yep. We'll be in touch.
Vicki, you'll write a check tomorrow.
Next on the agenda, we have the delinquent utility bills and miscellaneous invoices off the summer 2020 tax bills.
Per Chapter 8, Section 12 of the city charter, it allows us to assess the delinquent utilities and miscellaneous invoices off to, off to taxes and place that as a lien on the proper property on the tax roll. We have a listing of miscellaneous invoices, which consist of snow removal, fence permit, power pole that was purchased, cleaning of a ladder, sewer lateral. That total is in just a little bit over $1,000. The utilities, there were quite a few people that did come in and pay on Friday, so that amount is down to $13,581.28. So the total fiscal effect does change from $16,000 down to about $14,600. Now, if you do, Patty, our utility billing clerk, and I always like to look back and compare, you know, what was it, summer of last, last of 2019? In summer of 2019, we assessed $16,000 off to the summer tax roll. So I think with, you know, even with us not being able to shut off for seven months and with COVID-19, we, we did very well with, with collections and, you know, letting the people know them coming in. If you take out the largest one, which is 1110 Minneapolis, and that was due to, they had a renter in there, pipe burst, so that was due to a water leak. So if you take that out, you're down to $7,700. So I think, you know, a little kudos to Patty. She works very hard on this list to, to try and get it down, so we're not assessing so much in placing liens onto people's properties. So what we're looking for is just a, a motion to allow us to assess the delinquent utilities and miscellaneous invoices off to the summer tax bills.
I'll make that motion.
All support.
What was the updated number?
Updated amount is $14,615.4.
A little motion by Commissioner Mantle, a support by myself to write these off to taxes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, I never realized that landlords, if the renters don't pay their utility bill, it goes on the landlord's taxes.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily.
Is that...
The process that they don't have to pay that.
Okay, but that's kind of what we're doing here, right? That's initiating that process, right? Some of these, some of these are landlords and renters, right? So...
Yeah, they can enter into an agreement at a time.
There is a, what is called a lien waiver form, and if they fill that out and give us a copy of their lease agreement where it says the tenant is responsible for the utilities, then that, then we don't have the ability to write off to taxes. We have to go after that individual tenant.
So, so are any of these carryover from, say, last year when that happened or no? Do you usually get that?
They, they, when they have a new tenant, some, most of them are very diligent about getting that lien waiver form signed by the tenant.
Oh, imagine.
That, that rule's been in effect for quite some time.
Yeah.
Sure. I just never realized, never thought about it. That's one good reason to not be a landlord, right?
Why is it the landlords that don't take advantage of that? Don't have leases?
Yeah, we used to dump it all on landlords years ago, then they, I think that's why, that's one of the reasons we participate in life, is so that we can shut people off whenever we, for the most part, when we want to, so we can encourage them to pay their bill.
And we get in the assistance pool to help people.
To help people pay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have the extend the summer 2020 tax due date.
This is, it's been past practice to allow the due date for the summer taxes to be extended one month to September 14th, 2020, instead of, I guess, 15... one month to September 14th, 2020, instead of, I guess, 15th, which is what our city charter states. And this is something that we've just, we do year to year. So we're just looking for a motion to allow the summer tax due date to be extended to September 14th.
Sure. Is there a reason we do that or we've been doing it so long we just do it?
Because our charter says August 15th, but the state deadline is September 15th.
Got it.
So we've just always extended that one month to coincide with the state deadline.
That makes sense. I'll make a motion. We extend the summer tax due date to September 14th, 2020.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Stazinski, support by Commissioner Akala to extend the tax deadline to September 14th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up is the City of Gladstone capitalization policy.
And I think this is my last agenda item. This is, the Gladstone capitalization policy is something that our auditors have discussed with us the last couple audits. Currently, we have anything that is purchased $3,000 or more is considered an asset. And at the end of the year, they capitalize that asset. This policy will increase the amount for an asset to be capitalized at $5,000, which is the, is still on the low end, but it's the amount that the auditors recommended for a municipality our size. So what we're just looking for here is just an approval, a motion to approve the capitalization policy to increase the amount from $3,000 to $5,000.
I'll make a motion that we increase the capitalization to $5,000.
I'll support.
Any discussion? I have a motion by myself, support by Commissioner Hunter to increase the capitalization to $5,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have the Fourth Street Special Assessment District Resolution Number 2020-09-1.
This is the first step in setting up the special assessment for Fourth Street. I was working on a spreadsheet and I'll have it for the next meeting, but I can read off. The total project is, including the curbs and the sidewalk approaches, and there's some sidewalks, some new sidewalk we're putting in, in the paving, comes out to $565,800. Of that, the MDOT grant that we have, that we received is, was $318,800 and that leaves about $247,000. And so we're looking at splitting that where the major street would pay half and the special assessment would be half. So the special assessment would be, if you read in the document, we stated it that it's going to be approximately $125,000.
How many parcels are in that, on that Fourth Street being assessed? Do you know? Approximately?
Four per block, probably.
Forty-nine. Okay, yeah.
I can trim that number.
Yeah, so what we're looking for here is to set the date for the public hearing, correct?
And this is the public hearing for the district.
For the district, right.
Yes, to establish the district, yep.
We did this before.
Yes.
Couple times. I make a motion, I make a motion to set July, Monday, July 13th, 6:00 PM, for the public hearing to set the special assessment district for Fourth Street Infrastructure Project. All support?
We have a motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by Commissioner Stazinski. Do we need a roll call on that?
I can do a roll call for the record. I do, I do have to put it in the resolution, so. Commissioner Mantala?
Yes.
Commissioner Stazinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Akala?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. And the public hearing set for, what was that?
July 13th.
Next up, we have the fee schedule 2020-2021.
Yeah, this was sort of my labor of love. I started working on this in December because the fee schedule has not had a good overhaul and correction in a number of years. The problem is it gets shifted between departments and they're putting their numbers in and there ended up being some minor mistakes here and there. So Kim went through it and Patty went through it and I went through it. And then I went through it one more time tonight and found one minor mistake, which I'm blaming on Patty because she's not here. So this includes all the fees that we charge at City Hall and Stephanie charges for housing, building, and zoning. You see, she had a couple of, some of her, four of her fees going up. She added a late cancellation notice. On rental registrations and direct department, page, page four, those are all the fees that you approved on October 14th of last year. Direct department being our special department, they always have their rates at a different time of year. Public Works, page six, these are the rates that were approved last meeting. The one mistake is the extra cart tipping fee listed at $10.62. It should be $10.50. It's going up 15 cents. The streets and sidewalks, there are some increases and some decreases there. What Barry's plan for that was, looking at the MDOT contract, and so he's, wants to use the same price that you would for a MDOT project that's going through a town. So it'll be easier for him to keep track of. Just follow the MDOT rates and he added a snow removal truckload. This is, I'm sure, something to do with, with people pushing snow into the streets or if they want to push snow in the streets, you know, they'll build so much a truckload for hauling the snow away from their private property. Burnwood Cemetery is found on page seven and this would be the first rate increase since October of 16. And before that, it was October of '09. So all in all, our cemetery rates are still below most of the other places in Delta County. And if you have any specific questions, Kim is our cemetery guru.
I don't mean the meeting to go any longer, but I just have to ask, um, there's cemetery rates, there's a rate for a limb?
Yes, there is.
Is there, is that, has that happened? There's a, how does that?
It has happened before.
It has happened, okay.
It is not real common now with cremation being popular with that, but we, we do have limbs that are buried.
Okay.
And then they will bury the rest. So it does happen.
Then, public safety, there's no changes on the stuff, on the different things that they, they charge out. The water, this was, as we discussed at the last meeting, the monthly readiness to serve charges are, are changing as per the rate study. And the waste water, readiness to serve are changing and also the rate is going up 10 cents. Masonville Township rate formula, as it's figured out through the agreement when, from the loan, when they took out the federal loan for the project. I, I know the thing by heart, so if anybody wants a better explanation, but the big part of this is, at the beginning of the math formula, you see underneath the rates, we used to charge 5.0, which is equivalent of 5,000 gallons times the rate plus the 5%. Well, we were able to increase that to 5.8 because of the similar problem we're having in town of, they're sending us a lot of groundwater right now, so. And we had meetings with them and said, if you can, if you can reduce that, that infiltration of the groundwater that you're sending to us, we can lower that rate also, so. And electric is, is as per the, the rate study and there are some, some rates are going down. A lot of the residential rates are, are dropping down. The readiness to serve is going up a couple dollars each month. And if you see on, you see the, the PCAC charge and the energy optimization monthly charge, that's, those are two things. The power cost adjustment clause, that's figured out monthly and that's wholesale power cost compared to what we sell times the U factor. And so that is set, set by WPPI. And the E, energy optimization per meter or per kilowatt for the smaller accounts, that is set by the state. Is there any questions on the rate schedule?
Yeah, one thing, back in October, when we were looking at the parks and rec rates?
Yeah.
We'd mentioned briefly about the farmer's market area and about maybe renting that, kind of like we do a pavilion.
Okay.
I think there was some interest with Wally's was maybe interested in that or one of the places on Main Street was, was interested in that. That'd be something we could easily add. That wouldn't really be parks and rec, I guess. Would that just be City Hall, maybe? I don't know. It was DDA with that farmer's market together, right?
That was, that was DDA?
It's not part of the Parks and Rec Department.
The DDA, the DDA helps fund the farmer's market and the rec department helps the DDA in setting up for the farmer's market, but...
But the lot itself would design and paid for by the grant money of the city.
City, city in general.
Yeah, I think when we discussed it in October, we talked about parks and rec, we, we had mentioned that and it was like, well, it really isn't parks and recs. It's not part of parks and rec, really, right?
Right.
So that's why we didn't add it to their fee schedule at the time.
It'd be the most logical one to kind of...
Yeah. We could, wherever we fit it in there, I think, I think it'd be a good thing to do. I mean, it gets used three hours a week, 22 weeks a year, you know?
Yep, we could, we could add that in. Do a little research on what I could, what I...
Did you have an idea what you're going to charge for that?
Well, it'd be kind of similar to like a pavilion, maybe, you know? We got, we'd do 60 for the large pavilion and 40 for the small one, so, I don't know, maybe, maybe somewhere in the middle, maybe 50, around the middle.
$50.
I don't know, it's...
We have some early discussion. We're coming up to look at that because our fear is for parks, it's alcohol. I mean, I'm just gonna say this. So in the parks, when you're on city property and you have alcohol, there's, at least within the park system, you have a designated area on that pavilion. You step on the sidewalk, it's a different story. So we had a little issue, we got a tactic attorney and we figured that out.
No, we just designated no alcohol there.
We would have to do that.
Yeah.
But that's not typically how we rent out our spaces currently. So it might be a little bit different. And when we did get a request prior, it was for an alcohol related event, so that's why we...
It was, absolutely, yeah.
If they were going to sell alcohol, they'd have to get a liquor license and then they would have to fence it in themselves.
If, if like Wally's used to, yes, but if a private citizen comes in there...
Wants to have a birthday party there and wants to have beer.
...serve drinks.
Yeah.
They're okay on that lot, but there's a fine line between that lot and that sidewalk.
Sure.
And then, as Derek knows...
Oh, yeah.
Open, open carry on the sidewalk. It's different. And as a park, there's just that much more room. There's a different designation. So we have to think about how to do that. I do like the idea. I mean, easily, we can all, all the, I think, all of the requests that we've done so far, it hasn't been many, but just a couple.
The only time you see that lot broken is when the fireman parade comes to town.
Which is about a little bit...
Not saying a word.
We, we could bring this, that idea back as a separate agenda item. What we're asking this year with the fee schedule is that if you approve this tonight, but it doesn't go into effect, the new rate, or the new fees do not go into effect till August 1st, consistent with our rates. So it stays consistent. When, when people ask, well, when did that fee change? So we could certainly bring back that because Renee and I have talked and usually there's rental agreement and the rules with it and whatnot and that, the alcohol piece was the one we're, we're looking into. Yep. So we could bring back a proposed rental idea.
That's probably a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Could be a better prepared discussion for future meetings.
Right, we've been talking, but yeah, there's a couple, couple things we'd like and then could put together a rental kind of agreement with it. So right from the start, we, we start on best foot forward.
A little more than just putting down a list.
We like rules and forms and...
No.
Yeah.
I do have a couple really quick ones. The Bay Shore Ball Field, it says, it says per day for ball season, $225. Does that mean, if I'm reading that, it sounds like it's $225 a day to rent for, during the season to play ball there? It'll be on page five of, of the, 45 of the agenda packet, but page five of your...
Bay Shore.
Of your fee schedule.
Per day.
Or is that, you're asking, is that per day or is that for the season?
Correct. I don't know, maybe it was supposed to be for the season as opposed to per day or if that is actually per day.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I bet it is per day because usually when it's football season, it's one...
Yeah, and it says per season for football, so I think that's per day.
I mean, that's a lot.
I'm sure.
That's what I'm saying. It is a lot. $225 a day.
It gets used by, it's only... It gets used by, it's only rented to the girls softball league, so I'm sure that's what they pay for the year.
So it would be for the season, not?
For the season, yeah.
For the day, okay. And just the way I'm reading it, it sounds like it's 225 per day.
Yeah, and then looking at for the football, it says specifically per season when we meet there.
You're making a lot of money at the least per day. Because it is busy, it's not a normal summer.
So you're saying that needs to be corrected?
Well, I, I don't know if it needs to be or not. I'm not sure if that is meant to be per season or if it actually is 225 per day.
We will correct.
Do they? The whole season or?
So must, must be 225 a day then?
Must be 225 a day, so you'd have, you have four games there, if my math is right.
Oh, 225 per day for the season, right? So you got the Monday night, Tuesday night, yeah, so they'd be, they'd put them at a thousand.
$200, $200.
Yeah. Yeah, it's for the season, but you only get one day a week. If that makes sense.
Then the other one, I just don't understand it. I didn't know if we're going to have, this is more comical, because the old statute you still see in Michigan as well, it needed to be the medicine show. I didn't know if we're going to.
Well, that and the menagerie.
Menagerie.
Menagerie. We have one a week every day.
I saw that too, circus and menagerie.
It is, yes, it is in there, yes.
Hawker peddler.
I do issue.
For you.
I do issue under those. I've yet to have a circus or a menagerie while I've been here, but yep, the Hawker peddler is there.
Well, some of these meetings are a circus, so.
Right.
Maybe start church.
Yeah.
That's all I had. I was just more curious about the, the ball field one.
We'll make sure that it's worded correctly.
Per day, per season, it is confusing. Per day during the season, so can you rent it? What is the season?
Lots of things. For instance, if you had, so you had a family that wanted, for some unknown reason, want to rent it, play ball. And you're being charged $225 for that day. That's, that's quite a bit.
I guess it's, it's open for regular baseball families and pique nicks and stuff, but if you're organized.
Organized, okay.
Baseball team, that's a case of.
I got you. All right. That makes sense. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2020, 2021 fee schedule as presented.
Support. A motion by Commissioner Hunter, supported by Commissioner Akala to approve the fee schedule as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. City manager, report.
I sat in with Janice on our first tax tribunal. It was a case challenging the Ninth Street Special Assessment and the judge hearing it was recommending dismissal. This is the preliminary opinion of judgment. There's still time for him to appeal or answer some of the questions before it goes to the final tribunal. But it's usually a good, pretty good indication that we, we won that case. Met with C2AE and representative from Miller Canfield regarding the consent order for the wastewater plant. And the state is asking for our proposed revisions in the negotiation process and we will have that to Eagle on Wednesday. Till the committee met to go over our plans for the shut-off notices and payment plans. We still have a couple people that have asked for payment plans and we'll be working that out with those individuals. It was sort of confusing because, and it was confusing on our bill because our bills are printed in Wisconsin and they, some of the stuff on our bills was as per Wisconsin law. And Michigan law is different than Wisconsin law, so. Patty got on that right away and she, we have made it so those, all the notices on there will be controlled by us from now on, so we don't have that problem. I met with Brett Neme, Skip and I did, on WPPI through the COVID. Because of the COVID, our community, the WPPI is donating $5,400 back to Gladstone. And it's called Community Recharged Donations. And it's anake, I mean Renee came up with some good ideas on how we're going to use that. Going to use it for, one of, one of the uses we're going to donate to the volunteer firemen because they haven't been able to raise their normal funds for their equipment they buy each year. It's got to be used for, for people that have been out there working in because of the COVID. And the other one is we're going to hit, not so much the first responders, but the people that have been working through this, like the people we're going to hand out. Going to give out gift cards or cash cards for the people like working at the pizza shop. You know, the girls working at Holiday, they've worked through this whole thing and some of the grocery store workers in town. What was your other, you had a couple other ideas?
That was to provide them lunches.
Okay.
Because we noticed, you know, because the cops, they're getting lunch like every day. From different businesses and such, and so we really wanted to reach beyond that and like, yeah, like the Family Dollar girl that was selling toilet paper whenever it was free to get out of their houses, you know, those are people. And, and then the final thing was to pay tribute to people who have done over and above, you know, helping out with COVID awareness or COVID activities. So we're going to develop a program where we buy local gift certificates to local stores and then you can nominate somebody who did something maybe exceptional like taking meals to a shoving or something like that. And we'll reward them with a gift card to these paths or, you know, different places around town. So we, we set some money aside to do that. And so not only just giving them something, but doing some media attention with it and just kind of doing a little bit of PR with that. So we're going to do a program, actually, of kind of honoring some people. We haven't named it yet, we're still, that's actually on the agenda for tomorrow.
You got to make up a bunch of rules.
Yeah. But, you know, just a little bit of positive PR for people, just, you know, it might be a group, it might be an individual, just somebody who did something special for COVID activities. If you know of anybody, say to them, they'll be on our website.
They, WPPI gave us a whole sheet of how different communities have used it, some good examples. And one of them was the, one community, which we won't name, used it to buy lunches for the personnel at City Hall. I can't believe they put that out.
They threw a party for themselves.
I think it's a Wisconsin community, so.
Oh, and then one other thing too, for the Salvation Army, we're going to buy some LED light bulbs and LED things for their, their people that they support. So it would just be giving, giving them out to, say, Lloyd commanders, but they don't put that. So that's just another way of purchasing something that might help somebody. It's not necessarily a cash handout, but definitely getting some LED bulbs in your home could help reduce listening to our music. And those, those things are kind of costly to buy, so just talking about.
I had our first kickoff meeting with my parents from our, from Safety Works to get our safety program back and running with the city, with the supervisors. It's going to be interesting. He's more of a hands-on person. He won't be just sitting in rooms watching PowerPoints and old videos. It's going to make people work for their, work for their safety, so. Landfill vultures are in the game today and Patty stuck one in my face and I didn't read the how many pounds or anything. I just know it's for July and August. I went in her office, tried to find them and she hit them, so. But if you need, if you need to haul some, if you're a city resident or in a rate payer, you can come up to the desk and get a vulture to haul, is it a thousand pounds?
That's what they have.
Yeah.
I usually, I use them all the time.
Yeah. They are now available at City Hall. You can either come pick them up or if you haul. Last on the list is congratulations to Delta Force PI, which is up on, up the, on the old bank up by the cemetery. They were notified that they are listed as one of the top 50 businesses to watch in Michigan for 2020. So they're going to have a little celebration and kickoff thing, but it won't be till the end of July. I think they're sort of waiting for them to loosen up on the restrictions for, for having a get-together. But those congratulations to one of our companies, companies in town, that's pretty neat. That's all I have.
City commissioner comments? Commissioner Akala?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Commissioner Stuzinski?
I'd just like to wish everyone a safe and happy Independence Day celebration. You know, we've got a, it's a little bit limited, but there's no reason you can't celebrate at home and, you know, and just, I guess we got to emphasize safe this year, but we should enjoy it nonetheless. That's all I have.
Commissioner Mantala?
I'd echo that. Happy Fourth of July to everybody and just enjoy, enjoy the day and be safe no matter where you are. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hunter?
I spoke enough earlier, thank you.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July too. I know a lot of people probably share my sentiment and that they're extremely frustrated that, you know, that the emergency was extended and it's all based on science, even though that we're really not seeing any, any demographics or data that would support that. So try to be calm and make your voice heard in November. That's all I have.
City clerks comments?
I don't have any other than I, I'm scheduled to be out of the office tomorrow, so as the vendors that have heard tonight, that we will be having them, I'll do an update on the website so they have that. But I will be getting them applications or handling that first thing Wednesday morning if they've heard that they can apply. So I'll, I'll get something on the website tonight, though, that they can look at. That's it.
Meeting's adjourned.